You're up, Steve.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, December 27, 2023. We're here for a regular session of Hunt County Commissioner's Court. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life. As we make decisions, it may be in a righteous way. We thank you for everything that you have given us. We ask you to continue blessing this county and this great country that we live in. In Christ's name, we ask these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The text is fine. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state. One nation, under God, one and individual.
It's nice to see a good crowd here this morning. I hope we're not in too much trouble. All right, we have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from December 12, 2023, regular session. I entertain a motion for approval. Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioner's Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. I know we have a lot of people here this morning. And when we have these kind of crowds, I always request that if you have nothing new to say in your request, and we want to hear from you, but if you hear the same thing over and over again, just out of respect for everybody's time that's here, public's and ours both, please just say you agree with a previous speaker or a previous speaker and am pass on speaking so we can move the meeting along. And we'd appreciate it. If you want to speak, you're free to speak. You have your three minutes if you want it. We have Katie Tegarina, maybe? I butchered it. Well, you mean skip somebody else? Yeah, come to the mic, please.
I am here as a resident. I'm actually on the Hunt County-Rockwall County line. But it is in regards to the concrete crushing plant. I've emailed the county. I've reached out to CCEQ, as I'm sure most everyone that's sitting in attendance today has done. Do I need to give any other information before I?
Do I now?
Do I need to give more than my name or anything?
No, we got it. You feel left to cheat.
Okay. I have two children that attend school in the impacted area. There are other schools, as I'm sure others will mention here, that are in the radius of where this concrete crushing plant is, I guess, applying to be. It doesn't take long to research the environmental and health impacts and hazards that a concrete crushing plant has. And while maybe one standalone plant in an area may not have a huge effect on a community, if you are familiar with this particular corridor of 276, 548, 1565, there are already several concrete-type businesses. And so, it's a compound effect when you start adding a crushing plant. We already have a concrete batch plant. We've got the sand pit nearby. And all of that is a cumulative effect, not just with air quality, but also the trucks. So specifically, my point today is to talk about the truck and the traffic impact that we will see, because I'm living it on Poetry Road. Your neighboring county, Rockwall County, who I'm technically a resident of, but again, I'm on the line of Hunt and Rockwall County, because of a development that was approved on my road, on Poetry Road, of however many hundreds of homes. Mind you, this area is still rural community. Because of that development, we have seen an astronomical increase of semi-tractor, tractor-trailer loads coming in on our tiny Poetry Road. Okay? I've counted. And on a sunny day where the dirt is dry, because they have to excavate this particular area, it is one truck per minute on a road that has a 15-ton weight limit road. So all that to say, on average, we're getting about 600 trucks, I'm not kidding you, past my house every day, that exceed a weight limit for that particular road. Why does this matter for 276? Because how are we to determine that these trucks are just going straight from 276 to 30 or wherever their destination is? There are a lot of side routes that occur, you know, getting from point A to point B. And my concern as a citizen, not only is the air quality, which is addressed with TCEQ, but from a county and a citizen's perspective, the traffic increase, the toll that it takes on our roads, they cannot handle the amount of traffic that it already has. And then you add in however many thousands of trucks that are coming in and out of this plant. So as a citizen of the area, technically Rockwall County, but again, on the line, I am strongly, strongly against this concrete crushing plant. And whatever we can do to stop it, I would greatly appreciate, in the benefit of kids and also traffic safety. Thank you.
Dude, the road you're talking about, is it in Hunt or Rockwall County? It's got all the-
Well, Poetry Road-
Goes in both.
Goes in both. 276 crosses both.
But is all the traffic in both counties or just in Rockwall County?
Both.
Both, okay.
Both, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. And is this just for that development or is this going to be happening all the time?
I just use that as an example to tell you-
I'm trying to understand. So the increased traffic is for the development, not for the rock crushing?
Well, the rock crushing isn't open yet.
I know, understand. Is it gonna, is that gonna be used? That's what I'm trying to understand. Will that road be used for the rock crushing?
I don't know. Where is the concrete coming from that needs to be crushed? That's a question I'm sure someone will ask here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was just trying to understand. Thank you. Now, did you send a letter, any email in?
I didn't. What was your name? Katie Tegarina.
Do you wish us to read it later since you've already spoke? Okay. Because we intend, those that sent them in, we were intending to read them, so you don't have hers. Okay. Mark Clark.
Good morning. My name is Mark Clark. I live at 3564 Sandy Lake Circle in Quineland. I've been in the rock crushing and materials business basically since I was 15 years old. First crusher I ever worked around was a 1939 Alice Chalmers crusher. I've done crushing in Arkansas. I've done crushing in Oklahoma. I've done crushing in Texas. I've permitted in Arkansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. There's very little about crushing that I can't sit down with the best of them and discuss. Where we run into a problem on this particular deal is concrete. Concrete is not a benign substance. Concrete is a composition 10% cement, most of it made over in Middle Oathian, 20% air and water, 30% sand, and 40% rock. The cement, I'm not going to get into all the physical characteristics or the different chemicals in it, but it is a fine, very fine grind powder, which is kept encapsulated in tankers. It is pumped through hoses and then gets covered in water and then becomes part of this mixture. The sand, most of your local sands are between 95% to 98% silica. Okay? The other 5% is usually in iron or in organics. The rock in the metroplex will go from either 5% silica up to 60% silica, depending on what the source of the rock is. A lot of your Oklahoma rocks are 60%. So we're taking this group of products. We're adding water to them. They're hardening and they're getting into a form that we walk and drive on. Okay? Then that stuff is getting jackhammered up. Then it's going to get transported to this proposed site. Then it's going through a jaw crusher, which is a compression type busting apart of all this mixture. And all this mixture becomes airborne. They have, the TCEQ talks about a water mist being put on this. Guys, to do a proper mist, it would be under high pressure and it's going to be atomizing that water, where it will bond with this fine dust. Without it, it becomes airborne. This product, silica, on a 10-micron size, which is barely seen by the eye, with a 12.4 mile-per-hour wind, can move 2.3 miles. The next size, smaller particle, five micron, 12.4 mile-per-hour wind, can move nine miles. That's what we're worried about. This silica gets in your lungs. It does not leave. It is as bad or worse than asbestos, and it kills people. My time's up.
Thanks, sir. Charles Anderson.
This lady pretty much said everything that I have to say, so I'll be quick about it. I think we're all really concerned about the health issues. That's the number-one issue. But secondly, there's another health issue that needs to be considered, and that is the vast amount of trucks that will be up on Highway 35, 276, and 1565. We already, I go work out every day. It's only seven miles from my house to Roy City. I go to the Snap Fitness. Every day, going there, I pass at least eight or nine trucks. Coming back, an hour and a half later, same thing. And we're not talking about the trucks that are hauling concrete yet. And we're not talking about dump trucks. We're talking about semi-trucks. We're talking about 18-wheelers on these little bitty roads. That is a dangerous situation. And not only that, bless their heart, but these guys have to live and work in these trucks. And while they're living and working in these trucks, they're conducting business as they're driving these trucks. A couple of times, I've had to move to keep from getting hit. It's going to be a very dangerous, dangerous situation to add all of these trucks to the highways, to these little farm market roads that are not capable. My suggestion is to the state that the dot is to use the frontage road, put up a temporary place for this concrete crushing plant, because that's where all the concrete's going to be coming from, is the redoing of Interstate 30. So if we could just keep those big, big trucks off of the little roads and keep them on the frontage roads, that would tremendously reduce the risk of people getting hurt. You are going to read about it in the newspapers. It's going to happen. It's just like those intersections with a stop sign. Nothing gets done until someone dies and then they put up a red light. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Logan Epperson.
I'll be speaking on behalf of the Epperson family today. My name is Logan Epperson. I am 29 years old. I went to Texas A&amp;M University, got a degree in environmental science. Have a background in environmental health and safety and used to be a regulator doing stormwater inspections for a municipality in North Texas. My primary concern is going to be their ability to stay in compliance with the proposed permit. In particular, who will be doing the method 22, visible emissions from the facility? In section L of the permit, you're looking at no visible emissions exceeding 30 seconds leaving the site. We all know in Texas summer, we're going to get a lot of dust, and that's going to be a problem, just with the road traffic going to and from. I don't know how they're going to stay in compliance with that. In addition, I did a brief search on Texas Commission for Environmental Quality's Central Registry this morning. Based on a drive by the site, it does appear that there are already quarrying activities in progress, and this is currently happening without an active stormwater permit. Their SIC code should be 1422, requiring coverage under the multi-sector general permit, Sector J. Again, TCEQ's website might be a little behind. However, if they are conducting these activities without the proper stormwater permit in place, they are already out of compliance. If that is the case, I do not understand how they will be continuing to have compliance with a more restrictive air permit moving forward. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Stephen Maholik. Did I butcher that enough? I usually butcher everybody's names.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Maholik. I am a disabled veteran who lives with PTSD. The thought of living in an area that creates banging, massive noise, huge trucks, dust in the air, quite honestly frightens me. Now, in addition to being a disabled veteran, I'm also a father of one daughter with autism and another with asthma. The idea of living in an area that has these health concerns, again, frightens me. You'll hear a lot of testimonies about the health concerns, so I'll skip that for now. But these facilities should be away from neighborhoods and businesses. What does it say about the resale value of the property around it, if it is a health concern, as we all know? The Health and Safety Code, Section 382-085, states that a commission by rule should prohibit the operation of a crushing plant within 440 yards. I question, what does operating mean? Is it the plant itself? Is it the cars where people park? Can the plant be moved anywhere on the property? I would say it's anywhere on the parcel, not just where the plant is itself. In regards to the 440 yards, why is this measuring stick used? Under what weather conditions were considered when the 440 yards was given? What was the volume of the concrete being crushed? Or, if you will, the potency, as the gentleman mentioned earlier, of the concrete? The soil and the area runoff, what considerations were done? Every time a new development or a new road is built, the runoff changes. And we all know that development is happening. That's also development that creates a stronger tax base for Hunt County. Concerning the air and water pollution, I don't believe the burden of proof has been met yet, nor have I seen it or know anything of it. We should never forget also the spirit of the regulation, the intent of a regulation. We should never say, well, I couldn't do anything about it. I'm a former government official. I've served on many committees. I've served as a mayor. I understand the struggle and the challenge you have in front of you, but I also understand that looking at the spirit and the intent of any law, rule, or regulation is important. One other item to consider is, as a gentleman who drives a motorcycle, I stay off of Highway 30. I stay away from the large trucks. I stay away from the traffic. I live in an area where I knew it would be safe to drive a motorcycle. This is not going to create a safer environment. This will create more deaths. It's a given. Dust on a road on a motorcycle is like ice. Is that the environment we want to create in this town? The answer is no. In good faith, I hope the company's decision-makers withdraw their request. I hope that our public officials will do the right thing for the public itself. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Nick Bonoff.
Brunoff.
Close. That one.
Close. I don't want to repeat a lot of what has already been stated, but I've got a list of essentially seven points that I would like for the commissioners to consider as to why you should specifically come out with a resolution against and opposing this item. Number one is the health hazard, which has been addressed by other people. I won't go into detail. The permit for this facility is listed as being a permanent facility. This is not something that's going in for 90 days or a year or two years till they rebuild I-30. This is something that would be there in perpetuity, obviously something we don't want in our area. Item number three, all the big trucks and stuff, people have talked about that. I'll give you a quick example. When they rebuilt I-30, the intersection where the Buc-Ee's is, at 2642, to get the materials necessary to rebuild that area, they hauled in many, many loads of dirt, which came from a pit in our general area. Our particular county road, which is 2546, under Commissioner Monroe, Precinct 2, of course, you weren't commissioner then, but they had just rebuilt our road after many years of it absolutely falling apart. We were thrilled to get the road rebuilt. And no sooner than they got it built is when they started planning the stuff for the Buc-Ee's there. They were hauling load after load after load of dump truck full of dirt. It totally destroyed the road to where today it's a series of connected potholes. And that's what can happen when you have all of these literally thousands and thousands of trucks. Point number four. In addition to all of these trucks on the road, school buses travel, all of those, FM-35, they travel down 1565, they travel down 276. Think about a school bus versus an 80,000-pound load of concrete coming through. It's an absolute potential for disaster. Point five, crushing concrete, very noisy. It involves a diesel engine that is running literally from an hour before sunrise to an hour after sunrise, per the permit. So you've got this noise of the diesel generator combined with the noise of the crushing plant. Item six, property values. I think I speak for myself and all of my neighbors here when I say that we have worked hard to be able to live the peaceful rural life that we've chosen. We enjoy the beauty and serenity that country living provides, and we've invested our life savings to be able to live like this. Having a concrete crushing plant in the area will lower our property values. So gentlemen, if there's anything that you can do to prevent this from happening, there are other locations where the plant could go, especially along I-30. I-30 is a huge industrial area, literally from probably Roy City all the way to Greenville. There are plenty of places where it could go, and the guy who has made the application already has a business in Caddo Mills, where it could go there as well. So I ask that you provide support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Dean Sotus.
See you, Thomas. Good morning. I reside in Sandy Creek neighborhood as well. And I'll just say, first and foremost, one of the reasons, probably the main reason we're all talking about this today is because of Mr. Clark. He brought it to our attention in the neighborhood because his son works in the industry and saw this paperwork, because there was no notice provided under the statute, under the Texas Administrative Code. If you have a copy of the permit packet submitted by Dry Creek Materials, it specifically states under the public notice section in the instructions that Texas Health and Safety Code 382.056 and the corresponding rules in 30 Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 39, public notice, may require that you publish a notice of an application. There's two tracks on that. If you have a small business, you can avoid a newspaper publication that's required to be posted in a certain type of font or print, but there is a signage requirement. The person, the entity applying for the permit has to post, according to the Texas Administrative Code, Title 30, Chapter 39, signs must consist of dark lettering on a white background and must be no smaller than 18 inches by 28 inches, and all lettering must be no less than 1 and 1/2 inches in size and block printed capital lettering. Proposed air quality permit. I haven't been there this morning, but I've been up and down 276 since I found out about this, which was just a few days after the public notice period began on November 30. I have not seen one sign on that, on 276 or any place out there. And it's more important than that, and I brought this up to the Quineland City Council. We were fortunate enough to get a resolution from them in opposition. We were fortunate to get a resolution from Union Valley in opposition to this. We understand those are, they're important, they can be influential, but they're window dressing. And I understand, and we all understand, that there is a finite amount of activities that the county can take in opposition, especially at this stage of the game, for the air quality permit. But this entity, Mr. McClary and his company, they have to comply with the permitting requirements. It goes to the point the gentleman made about if they're not able to comply with the requirements on the front end, how do we trust them to comply with the pollution management on the back end? They have not shown, this company has not shown any desire to warn the public. This was slid in, application had been going on for a year. Final paperwork went to the TCEQ in October. It was deemed substantially complete on the 24th, and then the clock was ticking, hoping everybody would be distracted during Christmas and the holidays, and this wouldn't even be discussed. So we appreciate the Commissioner's Court taking time to address this. These signs are supposed to be in English and in Spanish, and in the application paperwork, Dry Creek Materials has to tell the TCEQ, they checked the box, that Quineland ISD has a bilingual education program, which means they have to post these signs in both language. There was no notice, no warning to the people on the front end. That alone should kill this permit. And we would appreciate anything that the commission can do to bring that in glaring detail to the attention of the TCEQ. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Jackson Bean. Oh, you're gonna be late? Okay. Jason Manion. Couldn't tell if that's an O or A there. Oh, okay.
So I'm not here to make the points that a lot of people are making, and forgive me, I don't have anything truly prepared because I didn't think I was going to be able to be here. But according to the Hunt County study of 2024, State Highway 34, in order to make FM-35 or whatever road they're going to use to get to 276, it's $200 million. I urge the county to take into consideration that these trucks are going to tear up the roads, and you're going to have to fix them. So just for fiscal responsibility, that is all I'm here for, is to just say, hey, make sure we're making money, because I don't see it, the math doesn't work out. There's, you're right, 276 is a great road, but everything else is one lane, each direction, almost no shoulder going in to that aspect of 276. And they are not going to hold up. Within a year, they're going to be crap, like everybody has said. Excuse me, I apologize. And ultimately falls on the county to fix, and if the county's not making money, then what is the point? That's all I have. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Is Daniel gonna, is Daniel on the line? Does he got anything he can add with this?
Daniel, do you have anything you can add? We've got five other comments to read.
Okay. Daniel Ray is our civil attorney, and he's out of town today, but he's online. So this is Daniel Ray, our civil attorney.
Okay, Daniel, go ahead.
I've got five other comments. All right, the first one is from Beth Johnson. I reside at 6249 Hidden Oaks Drive in Quineland, Texas, south and southwest Hunt County. I've been a landowner, resident of Hunt County for 18 years. I'm in my 19th year as a full-time Realtor with a 600- I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. With a 600 agent, Keller Williings Realty Office. I live in Hidden Meadows, a lovely subdivision of custom homes on two to three-acre lots in a pastoral setting surrounded by woods, now threatened because my home and land are less than two miles from the proposed crusher. I own three lots, but my custom forever home completed in 2015 in the middle lot. We had many choices where to build in the metroplex when we chose this spot in 2005. After years of searching, we chose to invest and live in southwest Hunt County because of its beautiful next year of lovely coast of blackjack oak woods, creeks, open pastures, friendly neighbors on a small acre flat, quiet setting, ability to build a custom home with a builder of our choosing, ease of going to work or entertainment shopping, yet far enough away from I-30 and Highway 276 and out of busy air traffic, bypass to avoid noise pollution, and far away from the mobile and stationary air pollution sources of Dallas- where we have lived for previous decades. A permanent crusher operation of this type would be a major change to the character of this area and devaluation of current quality of life for its residents. I am threatened as follows by the proposed permanent crusher, carcinogenic airborne silica dust. During at least seasons per year, I spend dozens of hours per week doing work or recreation on the generous portions, generous porches we design so we could benefit from seasonal southerly winds where we can enjoy seeing the woods, birds swirls on our lots, on our porch, under our porch ceiling fan. A good southerly wind would bring deadly silica dust into my lots. My right to healthy air to breathe is being stolen without compensation and without my consent by someone who wants to make a bunch of money. Those profits would be at the expense of the health of everyone else, an unfair, unwise, immoral, and perhaps illegal taking of our health and welfare by someone for profit. Out of conscience, should extended family outdoor cookouts of my home, including young relatives, become something in the past? Should gatherings and nature walks of environmental advocacy organizations in which we are active also be curtailed? If we prepare and eat the veggies from our own garden, are we putting ourselves at risk? We often enjoy an hour or so of outdoor bicycling, aerobic exercise, and strong breathing on the low-traffic county roads in our subdivision. On our subdivision road, the owner of the crusher will also steal this from us for his own profit. This is personal. A dear friend died of lung cancer though she never knew. Environmental exposure is real. Some of our neighbors and friends are current patients or survivors of various cancers. They don't need any more exposure in their lives. Number two, real estate value decline. As a full-time professional with decades of experience, I can state unequivocally that Realtors and appraisers will have to advise their buyer and seller clients to disclose the existence of the crusher, and its existence will lower appraised values. Buyers will ask and wonder about all the negative effects neighbors are now contesting. Can you imagine the parents or grandparents of young kids wanting to consider this area once they become aware of the crusher? This will cause fewer people to buy, properties will sit longer on the market, sale prices will be lower, home equity loan or reverse mortgage loan amounts available will be lower or will not appreciate as fast as other areas. The crusher's owner will have stolen a portion of my current and future retirement assets without compensation or my permission. Number three, traffic. By my math, one truck every 2.5 minutes during each work week, hours in perpetuity, will be added to our general area. Lines of vehicles at rush hours at several already backed-up intersections will be even longer. The crusher owner's profit reduces quality of life for everyone else without compensation or our permission. Number four, noise. Quinlan in this area is improving in property values, tax base, businesses, and home buyers moving in. Who's going to want to sit on a cafe patio or attend hardware store presentations? With the noise and dust from crusher trucks whizzing by every 2.5 minutes, everyone will suffer, only one will benefit. Number five, road deterioration and repair expenses to county. Those of us along County Road 2546 already suffered, suffered through several years of deteriorating roads and extended commute times due to slow-moving trucks going to and from the sand quarry on this road. But at least we knew it was temporary, and the product was noncarcinogenic, not carried by the wind, and would not ding our windshields. Why should we all endure the inconvenience? Time is money, and direct tax costs for road repairs caused by the crusher so someone else can profit. The last point, theft of use and enjoyment. For all the reasons above, the proposed facility is taking of my full uses and enjoyment, including for which I bought my land and house. I ask Hunt County Commissioners to do everything in your power to assure that this crusher permit is denied by the TCEQ and/or directly disallow it under any authority you may have. Beth Johnson. All right, this is comment number two, Dan Washington. Dear County Commissioners, my name is Dan Washington. My wife Lisa and I have resided at 3977 County Road 2546 in Quinlan for six years, and have loved the peace, tranquility, and health of our country living until the last six months. Our property shares a fence line on the south side of our property with the proposed concrete crusher site, and we are terrified by this possibility. We noticed a lot more noise coming from this property starting about six months ago. Most days of the week, we hear vehicles loading, tailgates being dropped, crashing sounds of sand being moved, dumped, and about any other construction noise you can imagine. We learned that the business named Dry Creek Materials brought this, bought this property and turned much of it into a sand pit. Next to Dry Creek, enter its agents cleared and burned a significant and sizable amount of brush, trees, and other foliage. The fires triggered a substantial amount of smoke and ash that settled onto all 20 acres of our property, which adjoins Dry Creek's property. We were so alarmed about the quantity of smoke that we feared a forest fire was headed directly toward our home. We called the Hunt County Fire Department to go and assess the situation. My wife Lisa is a cancer survivor, and the smoke and ash have exacerbated existing health conditions that are the result of her prior illness and treatment. The smoke and ash caused by Dry Creek's fires have also caused extensive interference with our quiet use and enjoyment of our property. In addition, we believe that Dry Creek is planning additional burns in the near future, along with preparing to implement a highly toxic concrete crushing operation. We've put up with a high nuisance already, but the possibility of poisonous industrial operations is beyond our wildest nightmare. We recently learned that Dry Creek is owned by Tony McClary. We have now reached out to Mr. McClary once personally and twice through our attorneys to open communications in an attempt of friendly civil solution. Mr. McClary is not responding. We can only conclude that he is only interested in his own agenda and financial profit. Mr. McClary and Dry Creek's conduct constitute both nuisance and trespass committed against not only us personally, but the entire community of Union Valley, Quinlan, and hundreds to thousands of other people and wildlife. This one man threatens the safety of our air, water, roads, and total quality of life. Perhaps, perhaps Mr. McClary did not realize the magnitude of destruction his plans could reach, but he does now. We know and pray daily that he will do the right thing and redirect his crushing plans to one of his three other sides, or reevaluate his business plans entirely. He has other options. We do not, we do not wish Mr. Cleary, McClary, or his family any harm financially or otherwise, but it's our responsibility to inform him of our desire to stay safe in our own homes. We all enjoy a significant tax increase this year on our properties and would gladly do our part, but ask for the protection that our county and state leaders and agencies are charged to provide. In closing, we ask that Hunt County Commissioners support the overwhelming majority of residents who oppose the Dry Creek Material Crushing Operation on Highway 276, and help us ensure that the air quality permit application submitted to the TCEQ be denied. Comment number three is from Ron Zieggenfuss on Skyhawk Trail in Roy City. I'm sure you've read the problems silica dust effects have on the environment. I moved to this area to enjoy pollution-free and limited noise problems. I have heart disease, and this silica dust will only contribute to my recovery. I have a hobby of beekeeping, and this dust on flora and water will hamper or kill the bees, and if we have no bees, then the environment will suffer. Unless I'm a retired Realtor, need I say what the value of our homes will be if this crusher is permitted? Dust-covered vegetation in homes, unlimited noise, destruction of roads by heavy equipment, values will go down, and so will the collection of taxes. I oppose this permit. Ron and Mary Zieggenfuss. Number four, Randy Huntress. I oppose the concrete crusher being planned approximately 1.5 miles as the crow flies from my subdivision, Hidden Meadows and Union Valley, Quinlan. I am concerned about the air quality degradation from silica dust and the environmental impact. The wind blows almost daily out here. I'm also very concerned about the increased heavy truck traffic, the damage to the roads, the loss of property value, which of course means the loss of property tax revenue. Please don't allow this operation to proceed so close to our residential neighborhood, which also negatively impacts the county, the Country Life School, restaurants on Highway 276, and the local tree and plant nursery, all businesses that I have supported since moving here in 2022. We do not need industrial businesses this close to our residential neighborhoods. Please help us protect our investment and our quality of life. And the final comment is from Arthur Kuhn. Honorable Commissioners' Court, please accept my comments below regarding the proposed concrete crushing plant at 4196 Highway 276. I'm a resident of southwest Hunt County, residing at 649 Hidden Oaks Drive in Quinlan. Although I have a Quinlan email address, I live in an unincorporated area less than two miles from the proposed concrete crusher. I strongly oppose this concrete crushing operation. I believe it will have a devastating impact on the community I live in and the surrounding area. The area around the proposed crushing operation has thriving home buying and business growth, and the proposed crusher will have a strong negative impact on the existing and future community. Some of the ways the proposed crusher will negatively me, negatively affect me and my community are, number one, carcinogenic silica dust. The seasonal southerly wind will blow toxic concrete dust directly toward my property. As an older man with a diagnosed heart and lung issue, I stay fit and healthy, in part by regularly walking and biking in my neighborhood. I also spend a lot of time outside gardening and working on outdoor projects. I'm extremely concerned about breathing this toxic dust. There are also many young people around here who could see the effects of breathing this dust many years down the road. Number two, noise. I have been around concrete crushing operations in the past, and I know that they are very noisy. The crusher itself is noisy, and the constant parade of trucks into and out of the facility with the engine noise and the constant sound of backup warning beepers will make areas near the crusher unbearable. Number three, traffic. It's my understanding that the proposed crusher will generate a huge amount of truck traffic, heavy truck traffic on FM 35, 1565, 36, and US 276, will have a serious impact on the quality of life for those who live on the roads and on those who travel them. Also, government will have to spend a great deal of money on additional maintenance of these roads, far more than will be gained from the additional tax revenue paid by the crusher. Arthur Kuhn. That's the conclusion of the comments that have come into the public comments email folder.
Okay, Daniel. We're going to discuss this in executive session.
Yes, that's correct, and if the Commissioners' Court desires, we can do that early at this point and have two separate sessions, or wait till the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Judge, I think we have one more gentleman.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Dr. Jackson Bean has arrived.
Sorry, guys. I apologize I'm late. Crazy morning. I'm going to save you all the, the three minutes of the same speech on, from my perspective, but I, I just mirror everything that was just said. Let me just read a few things about the dust generated from these things. It's three main components, silicon dioxide, a type of fly ash, and cement. Here's the MSDS for cement. Skin corrosion, severe eye damage caused by cement, may cause cancer, may cause damage to organs. Obtain special instructions before use. Do not handle until safety precautions have been met. Do not breathe dust. Wash clothing, hands, and forearms and face thoroughly. Contaminated work clothing must not be allowed to leave the workplace. Wear eye protection. If swallowed, rinse mouth. If on skin, take off immediately all contaminated clothing, rinse skin with water. If inhaled, remove person... I mean, it's, this is really toxic stuff, guys. Get medical attention. I mean, it goes on and on, but the silica dioxide, now we know, stone cutters, I mean, there's a class action lawsuit against, all of us were building houses and having marble and whatnot countertops, those guys cutting it are severe consequences now from doing that. They're breathing the dust. There's a class action lawsuit against, the city of Houston is suing the TCEQ for approving these things, and turns out they're in low socioeconomic neighborhoods for a reason. You don't see any of these in Highland Park for a reason. So I don't mean to beat you all down with the same, but right here's all the toxic, carcinogenic, mutagenic information if you'd like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? Come forward and state your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you for the time. I don't want to cover anything that's already been touched on. I don't think that it's even been considered too much. This area from Rockwall all the way out to Greenville has become a very, a very popular area, and builders are building left and right, as we all know. And the, the privacy and all that we've had is still there, however, it continues to, they continue to build. Obviously, that's going to stop. Builders are not going to be able to sell any more property as soon as this gets out. They, I mean, like, like what was said, it has to be known, it has to be let, let known. Everybody that's interested, once they find out, they don't want a house, they're not going to want a home here any longer. However, if it was turned around, these homes would be, continue to be built. A lot of people would come here. Now granted, for the people that are already here, we are kind of partial to our privacies and our, and our distance between ourselves and others. However, if we've got a choice to make, we'd be happy to welcome these new neighborhoods, some that are already here, like I said. And I think the actual tax revenue that would become from those new people, those new folks, would overwhelm, at least equal, whatever, what, whatever tax revenues might be gained from this company coming in. I think it needs to be considered. Yeah, it's a trade-off. I agree, but I think it's something that needs to seriously be considered. Everything else that's been said, I think everybody cannot, nobody can deny, and everybody agrees with. And it only leaves tax revenues, honestly, and I think it can be overcome in a different way. I really do. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, Commissioners, I think we'll skip through our agenda and skip some items not necessary for the public that's here, and then go to executive session and come back if the people are interested in staying and hearing what we can learn from Daniel in executive session. I know, I can only speak for myself, you know, we certainly, I would certainly not want this across the street from me here in my neighborhood. Unfortunately, some of the comments that said Highland Park or somewhere else in Houston could prevent it, well, Houston doesn't have any zoning rules, and they can't, they're very restricted on what Houston can do because they choose to be that way. The difference in most cities, all cities except Houston actually, can do anything they want to do and restrict anything they want to that's not prohibited by law. Counties can only do those things granted specifically to us by law, which is not a whole lot of things that they give us the authority to do. I'm, I'm a proponent of opposing this. We opposed a recent application for a solid waste transfer station on 24 Close to Commerce. This whole court, I think, was against it. If I remember correctly, we fought it, and at one of the public meetings, not to dishearten y'all, but one of the speakers asked the TCEQ, how many of these applications do you ever, have you turned down? The answer was none. They never turn them down. So it's a tough fight for all of us. I don't know what we can do. Hopefully, we can learn something from our civil attorney. He's been researching it to see what things we might can do, but either one will be in opposition of it, and the court can talk about it in the executive session. With that, I'll, we'll move on. No old business under new business, consent calendar, Commissioners, you have the consent calendar, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. B, action items, approval accounts payable.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel.
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, do, can we skip one for now, or is, we're going to talk about that in executive session anyway? So, we're good to skip it? Okay. We'll skip number two. Number three, consider additional software equipment licensing, support fees, technology fees, and new employee for the Office of Voters Administration. Jeanne Ash, we need to get this, she's a busy lady, we need to get her back to her office. Commissioners, I think you had a letter passed out. Changes are happening in voters and in desire not to disenfranchise voters and all. We need to make some corrections in our voters administration office. Mostly, she needs money and help and workers.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Actually, there's three different points to reference here, but we'll talk about the additional pole pads, which includes license and support fee, transport cases, pole pad flip stands, thermal paper for the printer and the delivery fees. You, I did include the quote for that, but I also this morning handed out pictures of exactly what I'm talking about, because this is not voting equipment. This is considered election equipment. These are the pole pads that the voters actually check in on, verify their voter registration. We're able to retain the signatures electronically and go back to that. This has taken the place since 2017 in Hunt County of those paper lists. But the pole pads, in addition to getting additional pole pads...
Can I stop you right quick?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners and public, the pole pads are connected to the internet. People worry about our voter equipment connected to the internet. Those are connected to the internet. They only search whether you're registered to vote or not, and if you voted in another place that day or during this election. The balloting machines are not connected to the internet.
Voting machines are not connected.
We're not connected. Nobody can hack them. They're not connected to the internet or any way. But if you see it, and we, because we have hotspots out in these locations so that the staff can check with our main computers to make sure people are registered and they've not voted somewhere else. I just want to make that clear, because people hear that and they get...
They do, and we do need to clarify that. That's the reason I included the picture, is this has nothing to do with the actual votes or the vote tallies. This has to do with making sure that there's not duplicate voters. Hunt County has also secured Wi-Fi's called jet packs so that we have secure Wi-Fi at each polling location. Historically, what we've had to do in my office is bring those pole pads back on election night, open each one of them up, power them on, upload everything so that we can retain those signatures and upload the voting history. The Wi-Fi's that are included in my request will allow us to do that onsite, will also allow us not to have to go out to the polling locations and hopefully, and work through problems. We can do that remotely. So, I am asking, the additional pole pads that I'm asking for are a result of Senate Bill 477, which amended several, part of, several sections of the Texas Election Code. Poll book requirements for curbside voting now require voters to vote through the curbside voting process in the same, and be accommodated in the same way that in-person voters are able to register. So, in the past, we've used combination paper forms. Now, the code has been amended that curbside voters should be able to check in and use the same voting procedures as anyone that comes into the polling location.
As for disabled persons?
It is for curbside voters, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That is the purpose of curbside voting, but we're not at liberty to determine that.
Okay.
So, my request is for 32 additional pole pads and also the fees to cover the 40 Wi-Fi units. And we are able, we've only had one billing cycle, so it's hard for me to tell exactly what was the setup and how long, how much this is actually going to be. But I am able to turn those Wi-Fi units on and off, and Verizon will prorate those fees for us, is what we've learned. Let's see, what else do I have? Do we need to, do we need to vote for...
Only employee also?
This is actually not a new employee. The, Judge, do you want to explain exactly how that setup has gone in the past? We have had an employee in my office that was not in, currently in the voter administration bracket.
Correct. It was under, it was a part-time employee that was the past elections administrator, Myna Cook, who is no longer eligible to work as she's running for the county treasurer's position. And so, we've had money in our budget, in my budget, as a part-time worker that worked at the elections office. It was set up that way with a previous voter administrator that was needing some assistance, and we wanted that person to work for the court instead of for the voters' office. So, we can use that money, which not much of it's been spent, because she only worked part-time for a couple of months, and I think it's $39,000 or something in my budget plus benefits for that. So, we can use that position is what we're going to do to hire another person, but we want to make them permanent employee instead of a part-time employee until we hire somebody. I can't give you the exact amount of money if we're going to need to move any additional money other than the money from my budget to the voters' office or not. So, that's one thing that we want approval of, if the court's okay with us hiring another person and then moving the money out of my budget for that position to the voters' office. That's the one we're asking for.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In five years, we've actually increased as a county 15,000 voters, and it is taking one designated employee to keep up with the mapping and the districting that the county is currently experiencing.
We have 64,000?
We actually have 68,171 voters.
Voters. And we got 100,000 people. Somebody do the math on that. I'm not sure that works out real well, but...
Jeanne, how many polling locations do y'all have?
We currently have 36 polling locations.
The bigger ones, we need two pole pads, though, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, by law, now, we have to have two pole pads at each polling location to accommodate the curbside voters, but they can also be used in-house for the in-person when they're not being used for curbside.
Okay.
I want to tell you something. I believe you've done a good job, and we're going to have to move forward, because we even have more people pulling in. And as far as the employee, the employee, yes, we need the employee.
So, anybody got any other questions? So, what we need is a motion to approve the purchase. Daniel, we need to do these individually, or can we do them all at one time, since they're one agenda item? Okay. So, we need one to approve the purchase of the software. We need one for the, we need to approve the purchase of the software, the new pole pads...
It's the pole pads and all accessories.
And all accessories that go with it. And we need to approve moving the money from my budget to the voters' administration budget for the new employee out of my part-time salary. And then, we need to add $18,000 to cover the cost of the Wi-Fi, move that to her budget out of contingency into her line item for communications, I guess is what the line item that's in.
Yes, sir.
And we need to add, as far as the technology goes, that she didn't request, I've been working on with Brandon for technology. Her, for some reason, the voters' administration office has no high-speed internet available in that block. So, we have contacted JUSS. They're going to run fiber to that building so they don't have to stand in one corner of the building holding the pole pads up to get a signal. We're going to have them run it. They're going to do it for us for roughly 1,300 a month. I think it's 1,200 and some odd dollars. So, we're moving, let's move, have a motion to move an additional, an additional $12,000 to communications for new internet service to that building also. And that sounds like a lot of money, but we pay 3,500 a month for internet at the courthouse, 2,500 at the sheriff's office, so yours is not quite as much as the rest of us, but it's still a little expensive for what it is. But hopefully, for the public, we'll be moving your office out to the interstate in the next 18 months, two years. We will no longer need that there, and we'll have it a lot more workable for the voters to come and cast their ballots and register to vote. So, with all that, Commissioners, I'll make that motion to include everything I just said, the self-record somewhere.
I'll second that motion, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. We got a motion in second. Any questions? And we'll help straighten you out, Mary, after, after I got you all confused. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you for all you do. With that, let's, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to take up the TCEQ request, then we'll come back and finish our agenda, and then we'll go back to executive session to finish our other business. So, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned to executive session at 11:01. Thank you all. If you wish to stay, we'll be back as soon as we can.
We will thank you all for being here. Hey, we will thank y'all for being here.[100.11]
Nor have they placed a physical sign at the location of the facility notifying the public of the application for an air quality permit, nor stating the matter in which the TCQ may be contacted for further information, 382.056C. While the applicant has 30 days from the date on which the commission finds that the application is technically complete to have the newspaper notice published, they have failed to do so as of December 22nd. And per Quineland newspaper of record, the Greenville Herald banner, no such notice has been provided for this publication in the Saturday, December 23rd, 2023 newspaper either. This failure by the applicant would to provide the statutory required notice to the public concerning the potential threats to the air quality in their community demands that their application be rejected. Lastly, the location of the proposed source of air contaminants is within 440 yards of a residence, school, or a place of worship, which is prohibited by the State of Texas Health and Safety Code, Section 382.065A. The residence located on the property addressed as 4196 Highway 276 West, Quineland, Texas, 75474, which, as stated earlier, is not the correct address for this permit facility, is within the prohibited radius of proposed location.
That's motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for coming.
Yep. Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep fighting.
They'll gather up like that. Go down there. I think they got a good coach.
All right, let's commissioners, let's go back and start at item one under action items. Considering possibly take action to approve contracts with Axion Enterprises for Justice Primer software for the Hunt County District Attorney, Hunt County's offices, and Obie Walker and Calvin, they are. One of y'all want to come forward and are both of you or all of you, who wants to speak? Who is the spokesperson?
Good morning, everybody. Good to see y'all. Judge if the court would allow us, as you know, we've had meetings, previous meetings, we've been here, we've had some issues with our discovery, or our ability to provide discovery. And so, just a quick bit of history, we went out looking for some other vendors that could provide us some type of service.
Can you tell the public what the problem has been with discovery? You can start from the first place?
Yes. And Judge, if you don't mind, if I could have Steve come up, he's actually a much better spiller than I do on this.
Okay, fine.
This is First Assistant Steve Lilly.
Right.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Steve Lilly, and I'm, as Mr. Walker said, his First Assistant District Attorney. Starting about a year ago, but probably before that, we noticed an increasing problem with the storage and sharing of what's called discovery, which is the information we have to provide, that we keep on every case, and we have to provide to the defense under the Constitution and the laws of the State of Texas and the United States. The increase in digital discovery over the last five to 10 years has made this an increasing challenge for not only our offices, but offices across the state at least, and I think everywhere. The software system that we were relying on to do that is the Tyler Odyssey system, which is the case management system that our office, the county attorney's office uses, and the county uses at large. And we were using that system in a way to try and store and share our discovery. And it just was not, and still is not, really designed for the use, for that type of use. It just did not work well. It was crashing sometimes, and the defense attorneys weren't able to access their digital discovery a lot of times. We couldn't upload large files, which is a standard now. What we call a large file is no longer a large file. What we thought of as a big file is now routine. Two gigabytes or larger for video files, which just five years ago was unheard of. And that's, we get those on every case now. And those cases would not, those videos would not upload to the system. So we did, beginning about, I don't know, nine months ago or so maybe, we started entering into conversations with different vendors who provide this sort of more specialized service. Not case management service, but discovery, acceptance, and sharing, and saving. And we talked to, we had meetings with several of these companies over Zoom across the United States. I think we had four, we had at least three Zoom meetings, and looked into a couple of other companies. And we were in discussions with a lot of them, and we kind of narrowed it down to two and then one. And the company that we propose, that we are asking for this funding for, for this service to share, receive and store and share discovery is Axon. And they have a specific platform. Axon is, of course, an industry leader, not of course, but they're an industry leader in other areas of law enforcement. And within the last five years or so, they've been providing this service for prosecutors. And so, and that is the company that we have been in sole, kind of like negotiations over the last couple of months to try and figure out how much it's going to cost, what the services are, what the contract looks like. And so that's where we are today, is we're asking the court's approval on that.
So if I understand this proposal from Axion, both the DA and county attorney's office has to get their own license, is that right? We're paying for two different license fees?
Yes. Actually, it's per person, a per license. So our office would kind of, there's 12 licenses for our office, I think the number is the same, or very similar to the county attorney's office. We actually are paying per license.
Okay.
But yes, they're split between the two.
So we'll have two different budget items, one for DA, one for county attorney?
That's correct.
This is approved? Okay, all right.
That's correct.
And do y'all have money in your budget, or we need to get you money in your budgets?
I'll defer to the electeds about that.
Good morning, Commissioners. No, the county doesn't have this item budgeted in my budget.
Okay. No, be the same?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, I know this has been discussed for length. Looks like the yearly payments are $14,763.30, if I'm reading that correctly. Does that sound about right, Steve?
Yes.
And it'll be annual for five years?
Yes.
So it's a five-year contract for both offices, roughly that same number. It starts at $14,763, ends up at $17,279.7 on the fifth year. Goes up a little every year?
That's correct. I couldn't, I don't remember the exact percentage, but it was.
It's just, that's a percentage over the deal? Okay.
That's correct.
All right, so.
Your Honor, may I ask you this? Daniel, I saw that you sent us the 41 page you've read over this whole thing, correct? Is Daniel there?
Okay, yes.
Good enough, thank you.
All right, so Commissioners, I guess this full payment, so it's not, it's in April, we're in December, so it won't be activated till April? Are they going to go ahead and get it on your computers, and we'll have the first payment in April? Is that the way it works, or?
That's the way that this quote and contract are written up, yes.
It's going to take some time for them to install all this and get it and all, is that the delay, or?
Well, we would love to have it sooner.
Right.
We also understand there's our law enforcement partners, and we have to work with them a little bit as well. So probably March would be the earliest realistic, but.
And, and, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Brandon, NIT, has approved all this? We got, we're sufficient with computer equipment, no additional equipment, or?
That's correct. That's the beauty of this particular program, is it's cloud-based. It doesn't require a lot, or really any infrastructure, or storage locally.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, perfect. All right, any other questions?
Judge, if I recall correctly, this, it's a five-year contract, but it's cancelable without penalty at any point?
It is if the funds are not approved by this court, then it would be, then it's cancelable. Cancelable.
Each year.
Each year, yes.
Correct.
Every year, okay, great, gotcha. And then they provide their own IT to support this branch as well?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
We're going to do them separately, correct?
Was listed as one item, so we'll, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of Axion Enterprises' software for the district attorney's office and the county attorney's office for a five-year contract, payments due in April of each year, starting April of 2024. And that I also would make in the motion that we move $14,763.30 out of contingency for each department and put it in their IT or operating, operating?
Software.
Software repair and maintenance line items.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Marys, was that okay for y'all?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Glad you're getting your, hope this fixes y'all's problem.
We don't want to see y'all for another year.
Action item number two, consider the renewal of Campbell ISD contract with Hunt County Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officer. Commissioner, this was done a year ago in this annual contract. We're just renewing the same contract. Any questions? Now, I entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, a letter of support for the deflection program for North Texas Behavioral Health Authority. Commissioners, I'm pretty sure I reported to y'all that I attended a, wish Calvin hadn't left, attended a meeting for our new Behavioral Mental Health Association that's been created locally with a hospital and the county officials and other mental health officials in and around the area, including our contracted Northeast Texas Behavioral Health Group. And the last meeting we had of that group, North Texas, Northeast Texas Behavioral Health Group put on a program where they have put a deflection program and another program called Back Door in Kaufman County. And this is where they have a facility for the deflection program to where if law enforcement picks up somebody, and I'll probably get some of this wrong, but my understanding was somebody that was homeless, or somebody that's on a minor charge for shoplifting or trespassing or something, and they're definitely having some mental issues, instead of bringing them to the jail, they can take them to this deflection center to get them help with their mental health issue. And this deflection program has the ability to get, not only to get them assistance for their problem, get them medication, get them seen by a doctor, but they can also provide some short-term housing for them. And it's worked real good over the last year or so in Kaufman County. So the North Texas Behavioral Health Authority is applying for a grant to put a deflection center in Hunt County that they will be running and staff and all, but we need letters of support. And so what I'm, I'll be happy to turn it out through the corridor from my office, but we need approval to get that letter to them for their grant. So I'm requesting approval of a letter of support to be drafted out of my office, and y'all can all join in and sign it, or sign it on your own, however you want to make the motion, and get this to them, so hopefully they can get that grant. So I entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Y'all want to sign it? You want to make that part of?
Yes.
I think we all need to sign it as a.
Everybody would like to say, okay, so the motion is the letter of support from the court at large in support of this program. So that is the motion? Correct?
That is correct.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Appointing Mary Ann Moreland to serve in Hunt County Child Welfare Board. She's already been serving, I believe, on that board. She just needing to be renewed up, is that right, Judge? I think that's correct. So entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item six, discuss and possibly take action on award of formal bid number 240-24, janitorial and paper supply, 12-month contract with four-year renewal option effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, as per bid award. Purchasing department recommends award to Cheney Paper Inc., the lowest and best vendor which best conforms to the bid specification as per the bid tabulation. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item seven, discuss and possibly take action on award of formal bid number 241-24, vehicle tire and tire service, 12-month contract effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. The purchasing department recommends award to Southern Tire Mart LLC, the lowest and best vendor, which conforms to the bid specification as per bid tabulation. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number eight, acknowledgement of an order signed by the district judges appointing Tammy Hines, as, that should be the district judges and county judge, appointing Tammy Hines as the county purchasing agent, effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025, with a salary of $72,325 per year. Commissioners, the purchasing board is made up of the two district judges and the county judge. And we met upon hearing that Cheryl was retiring at the end of the year, and we voted unanimously to appoint Tammy, who is her assistant currently, who has all the certifications necessary. She has a college degree, well-suited, and been with us several years in that capacity of assistant county purchasing agent. So the purchasing board submits this as the person to replace Cheryl. And with that, I'd like to really appreciate and thank Cheryl Lowry for her many years of service here, and wish her well in retirement, and wish I could get there quicker. So, I entertain a motion for approval.
Shall moved. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right-of-way of County Road 2216 in precinct two, under normal stipulations.
Make a motion, we approve this construction under normal stipulations?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, upgrade request of approximately 750 feet of J. Hamrick Lane from Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct 1 at county's expense.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade? Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, upgrade of approximately 1,563 feet of County Road 1022 from dirt to rock in precinct 1, money is in escrow.
Judge, make a motion to approve this upgrade? Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 12, upgrade of approximately 5,128.56 feet of County Road 1050 from dirt to rock in precinct 1 at county's expense.
Judge, make a motion to approve this upgrade? Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 13, upgrade of approximately 530 feet of County Road 1053 from dirt to rock in precinct 1 at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade? Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 14, upgrade of approximately 1,160 feet of County Road 1076 from rock to oil sand in precinct 1 at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade? Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 15, upgrade of approximately 370 feet of County Road 1148 from dirt to rock in precinct 1, money is in escrow.
$3,700.
Oh, so 3,700 feet of County Road 1148. Thank y'all.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade, Judge? Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 16, the final plat of Magnus Switchyard Edition in Precinct 3, Rayburn Country Electric Cooperative. Ryan, you want to brief us?
This is a small tract that's going to be a substation that's adjacent to that Rayburn electric line that ran through a couple of years back. They're plating the, plating the lot to separate it out of the larger track. Now, this one, I have not been out this week, but last week, whenever I went by, they have not brought the county right, the area to be dedicated up to county spec yet, and it still had some trees in it. So I would recommend a conditional approval pending their completion of the upgrade of the county right-of-way to be.
Are they just removable, like trees? There's no road upgrade?
No road.
No road upgrade, just trees.
All right. All right. Any other questions? Entertain a motion for approval of Magnus Switchyard Edition with the condition that the right-of-way be cleared prior to the recording of the plat?
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 17, the final plat of Charlie Moe Estates.
That's correct.
In Breason 3.
Pretty, pretty simple plat. It is on 1567, just outside of Lone Oak. Everybody has the, all the lots have the required furniture, and they all meet county requirements.
Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 18, final plat of Windy Meadows Estates, Phase 2 in Precinct 4.
All right, this is the second phase of Windy Meadows. This one had a full set of civil plans and a construction, some drainage structures required on the property and everything else. And this would be approving the final plat. Now, the copies that I gave you were marked preliminary, and they showed the contours on it. The actual copy to be recorded will be marked as final, and the contours are not there on that, on that copy, so.
Okay. They not turned any into us yet, or?
Yeah.
Give that. Okay, all right. All right, entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 19, acknowledge the completion of road and infrastructure construction in the beginning of a two-year warranty bond for Windy Meadows Estates, Phase 2 in Precinct 4. Ryan?
Okay, this is just acknowledging that the road construction is complete, all the utilities are complete, all the drainage structures have been installed, and that he is ready to start his two-year maintenance bond for the road before it is actually dedicated to the county. And what I'll do is, next Commissioners Court on the 9th of January, I'll actually bring the bond back for your, for signatures and to get that bond recorded so that it's a public record and all. And that'll give us two years from that point to, that the developer and the construction companies are responsible for the maintenance of that road. So I'll inspect frequently, Commissioner will inspect frequently, and we'll make sure that that road's not falling apart and doesn't have problems, so.
All right, so we, he hasn't brought us the bond yet, or you had it and couldn't get in on this?
I have the bond, but I wanted to run it through so we can get the date of the acknowledgement on there, and then.
Then approve the bond?
Once it's completed, it'll come back, and that way it's recorded in public.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, are there any other comments on the line?
Anything else, Court?
Now, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items one through four.
Shall move.
Oh, yeah. Hang on. Come up and state your name.
I'm Lacey Coles, and I just had a quick question. With the North Texas Behavioral Health Authority?
Mm-hmm.
Where would that deflection center be located, if it came?
I'm not sure yet. I don't know that they've identified a spot yet.
Okay, so would we have to buy, like, new, purchase new land for that, or?
I don't know in Kaufman, I don't remember if they purchased it, or they just leased a bill. I think they leased facilities in Kaufman County.
Okay.
If memory serves me correct.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh, you bet. All right, motion to go into executive session under one through four, did I hear?
Yes, and I seconded it.
Seconded, okay, I've got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 11:46. And if we go fast, we can go eat lunch. Yes. Now, uh, fourteen and fourteen.
All right, it's 12:19. We're back in regular session. Is there anything else before the court today? Being none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned at 12:20. Thank y'all.